Good evening and welcome to tonight's Tuesday, March 12th, 2019, School Committee Meeting. We will now call this meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Mr. Bishop.
President.
Dr. Page.
Present.
Ms. Pellican. Ms. Ryan.
Present.
Ms. Shea.
Present.
Mr. Thomo.
Present.
Sixth present.
You will now stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
We will now move on to Agenda Item Number Three, Public Input. Is there anybody here in the audience tonight that would like to speak before the School Committee on a matter that's not on the agenda? Please state your name and address for the record.
I'm Kathy LaPriore, 51, Mark Avenue. What I have to say is very hard because I'm the biggest defender of our school system, having faith that it will get better and parents will keep their kids here. I have a grandson at West Street School who is very happy there. I have a grandson who is at another school but Mrs. West Street School. We all hear about the behavior problems. The language that some of the high school students use when addressing teachers is unacceptable. That has got to change. Teachers feel that their hands are tied. They can't do anything about it. Ridiculous. When is this idea going to be enforced that the teachers have the upper hand? The students are not to control the teachers. I engage with students and teachers to get a feel of how they think things are going. I don't want to just take the things on Facebook as the only side of things. I don't think that's fair. I hear good things and not so good. I think it's a wonderful thing that the class of 2019 donated the banners that are all around the parking lot of the high school, middle school. I think those are great. I had a conversation with a teacher over the weekend who has a real good relationship with many of the kids, but he may unfortunately be leaving our system because of the frustration of the way some of the students get away with the things, their bad behavior, for instance. There are a lot of great students, too, who stand up for their school and friends and are going to do well. There always has been and always will be kids who act up and give other kids a hard time. That's part of growing up. It's part of being a kid. But this bullying stuff, time after time, is foolishness that has to be stopped. It can't go on. We hear about the seven-year plan. What magical thing is going to happen in seven years? We don't have that long to correct these problems. If we keep losing money to school choice, which I don't always believe in, there will be no money for our kids here. We could be talked right out of our school system in three years and everyone sitting up here will be relieved of their positions. We won't need to have any of these conversations anymore. Is that the look we're going for? I don't think so. As I said at the beginning of the receivership, one of the problems was the turnover of teachers. I don't think that's improved. It continues and it's very upsetting. What I get from people who are involved in the system, and I agree with them, is that there are too many people filling too many positions in the administration that don't need to be there instead of filling the teacher positions when we need them in the classrooms and there are subs instead. That's a terrible thing. In my opinion, none of these things looks good on the receiver's watch. Do I have another minute? I don't know if I've used up my time.
You can go ahead. Thank you.
I'm also wondering about why we can't have the honor roll and high honors in the paper anymore. No one seems to have an answer for that. And I think it's such an important thing and it would be something positive about our school system. And we had it last, I'm pretty sure, yeah, last year we did. But all of a sudden, we're not allowed to, I guess, have to get permission from somewhere. And I'm just, my husband asked this question, I don't know if it was in December or the January meeting. So I'm hoping someone has an answer maybe for that tonight. What happened with that?
I'd have to speak to Mr. Danby, but we'd be happy to follow up.
To who?
The principal of the high school, ma'am. Mr. Pat Danby.
So the principal at the high school is in charge of that?
He's in charge of the, he's the principal of the high school, ma'am, so he works on developing his honor roll.
Because I asked the principal at West Street a couple times and she said that they have to get permission. So where would she have to get permission?
I'm not going to go back and forth. I'll be happy to meet with you personally and answer all of your questions.
This is another thing that's bad. Someone comes up here and asks a question that people at home may be interested in and it's always going to be a private meeting. That doesn't give an answer to the rest of us. Why can't that be answered here?
Be happy to meet with you and we can have a conversation.
That's not answering my question.
Well, that is the answer. Thank you.
That's why this isn't looking good under your watch. Thank you.
Are there any other citizens here tonight that would like to speak to the School Committee?
Mrs. LaPriore. Mrs. LaPriore, thank you for coming up and thank you for always being out there. A lot of us appreciate that and I'm sure we all feel the same way.
Ms. LaPriore, I would just ask that you go so that way we have it for the record.
Someone was wondering if you were at the November 13th, 2018 meeting. I checked my notes and you were.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. LaPriore. Is there anyone else? Seeing none, we will move on to the discussion of minutes. Is there any corrections? I noticed, I noticed something quickly. Let me see if I see it. It's in another set of minutes for a different body. No one has any corrections? Okay. We'll move on to number five, New Business. We'll move on to the High School Representative Report. Ms. Dillon?
Saturday, March 2nd, was our Southbridge High Drama Club participated in their first competition at the Massachusetts Drama Festival by the Massachusetts Educational Theater Guild. It was a huge success and was run very well and everyone who worked there were very kind and generous. A few of our drama students who participated said that the students and instructors were extremely supportive when they went up and they were all welcoming them and they even brought candy as gift baskets to welcome them as their first year. For Student Council, we are currently planning to celebrate Winter Sports Week for the week of March 25th. This will include spirit days and culminate in a rally that Friday to congratulate our winter sports athletes as well as showcase a staff versus student basketball game. And lastly, our National Honor Society is currently in the process of new student applications and students are, who are eligible, have received their applications and are filling them out and a group of teachers have volunteered in the selection process. And any volunteer opportunities for StuCor NHS, please contact Ms. Landine at the Southbridge High.
Thank you, Ms. Dillon. Are there any questions or comments from the Board? Seeing none, we'll move on to Item 5B, Receiver Superintendent Announcements. Dr. Valar?
Thank you. I'm going to, I'll keep my comments very brief this evening because tomorrow night we will be having a conversation with the Subcommittee of the Town Council. I would encourage folks to attend, 6:30 meeting. We'll have a presentation with some additional data that we can discuss at that time. But I did want to bring up that on February 8th, I was very pleased that we were able to have a community celebration with the 350 members of our staff attending a conference at the Southbridge Conference Center, inviting our friends from the University of Connecticut, celebrating our recent selection as a national demonstration site for the Positive Behaviors Interventions and Support Climate and Culture work. Very happy that our chairperson and Martina Shea also were able to attend as well as many members of the Town Council and the Southbridge Business Community. During that time, we were able to learn about one, that the grant-funded event, to be clear, that was funded by the Worcester County Health Foundation. But we were able to learn about what is happening in our schools and celebrate the hard work that our teams of teacher leaders are doing to reset and establish new climate and culture guidelines and focusing on positive behavioral supports and interventions, but also, to be clear, discipline continues to be necessary and is not to go away when you implement PBIS. The two work together. The University of Connecticut and some international experts spoke to our staff, but I think our staff particularly enjoyed hearing from each other. There are presentations from every school. I think members of the Town Council and I, we could hear from the School Committee, but learned quite a bit about PBIS during that event. It was really positive and I think community members who were able to attend walked away feeling pretty good about it. So that is a real strong point that was really happy to happen and I want to thank Margot Farick and her team for leading that work because it is important to our future moving forward, addressing some of our significant issues that we have, that we face and that continue to need work and effort. On curriculum instruction, I think it's important to note that we launched a new curricular series in the middle school this January, Illustrated Mathematics, and we have seen already measurable improvement. Teachers who lead that curricular team are quite happy with the support and resources that they're getting and we're seeing across the board, 100% of classrooms using grade level content that's extremely rigorous and students are responding well to that. So again, we'll have some more data tomorrow night that can show some of the measurements around that, but I'm very pleased with the area of those two initiatives and how they're moving forward. So thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Valar. Are there questions for Dr. Valar from the Board? I have one. To set the last meeting, you talked a little bit about instituting some new restorative justice techniques within the system. I wanted to hear if there was an update on that, if teams had been assembled, if there was new policy guidelines being developed, just more about what we're doing as a district to institute these restorative justice techniques.
Sure. And it's a, first, understand how positive behavior supports interventions work. It's a multi-tiered system of support. The concept is to create a, what we call Tier One, or the regular school environment that's supportive enough to assist the majority, about 80% of students, so that they're successful in school, offering resources then to support kids in what we would call Tier Two and Tier Three, which are children who need additional supports. That can be instructional, on some type of academic, or in this instance, social emotional, requiring different interventions. So as a part of a PBIS implementation, you can implement things such as restorative justice practices. At the high school, middle school, we actually are working with the School Empowerment Network who have trained school administrators and have begun to conduct those interventions. Again, that means working with both faculty and the student to help them kind of debrief and begin to move forward after there may be some type of discipline or issue or conflict and there are certain procedures that move through. So that work has begun. We have really a long way to go as a district before we can say we're fully implemented. It's educating everybody who works for us on these skills and these techniques and ensuring that it's happening with fidelity regularly across the board. So that's going to take probably every bit of the five-year agreement that we have with the University of Connecticut, but I think we are already starting to experience improvements as a result of their efforts.
Thank you, Dr. Valar.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Seeing none, we'll move on to the next item, Agenda Item 5C, Fund Our Future Resolution. This was, I had brought this up at the last meeting. What we're seeing across the Commonwealth is a number of school committees are signing on to say we need to fundamentally reform the Chapter 70 funding formula. It hasn't been updated since the 90s. It's one of the few areas where we're finding that not only the Massachusetts Association of School Committees is on board, but the MTA. A lot of us know that they don't tend to see eye to eye on a lot of issues, so to have them both on board and see them working together and seeing school districts and their respective unions working together on this is really important. And I think, I felt that it was important for Southbridge's voice to be heard in this. I will, if the members so wish, I will read out the resolution in its entirety for the record and we can go on from there to discuss it and see if we have any changes or work we want to do. So is that the way we want to go?
I move to read the resolution for the public.
Second.
All those in favor? All those opposed? All those abstaining? One abstention for the record, Mr. Bishop. Resolution, support of full funding for our public schools. Whereas free public schools available without exception are foundational to our democracy and are required by the state constitution, and whereas all of our students, no matter where they live, deserve high-quality public schools that teach the whole child and provide them with a rich school experience that addresses their academic, social, and emotional needs. And whereas the state foundations, state's foundation budget formula, which determines state aid to each district, has woefully, been woefully out of date for years, thereby underfunding our districts by more than $1 billion a year for essential educational services. And whereas the Southbridge Public School District in the 2018-2019 Select Populations Report by the Massachusetts Department of Education was ranked the 10th highest in the Commonwealth for the amount of economically disadvantaged students, was ranked the 23rd highest in the Commonwealth for the amount of high-need students, was ranked the 28th highest in the Commonwealth for the amount of English-language learner students, and was ranked the 77th highest in the Commonwealth for the amount of special-need students. And whereas the legislature failed to pass any foundation budget legislation in the last session, leaving districts, educators, and students without the funds necessary to support the schools our students deserve in every district in the state. Therefore, be it resolved that the Southbridge Public School District Committee urges the legislature to approve and fully fund comprehensive new, comprehensive new foundation budget formula by May 1st, 2019. Is there public, is there a discussion on this? Ms. Pellican?
I move to accept the resolution as written.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Thank you. Any further discussion? Dr. Page?
I would like to get some feedback on this from the, Dr. Valar, the receiver, to see what his position on this is in terms of whether or not our problems are truly funding in orientation or there are other problems that aren't necessarily driven strictly by economics.
So last year, when I started, we had a $3.1 million budget reduction and this year we are likely to be, all depending on how funding formulates, anywhere between $2 and $2.2 million. So we need every penny we can get from the Commonwealth. There are certain needs in the district that require funding, training, professional development, student interventions, or particular requests. I've been in conversations with the Chair of the Town Council about our needs and I've also been in conversation with the Commissioner about our needs.
And could I ask, what is the response from those individuals in terms of their responses?
I think everyone recognizes that resources are very important. Certainly, we reckon, I recognize, and I think Mr. Jovan recognizes, Southbridge has a limited capacity, so we have to work within that. And my pushback to my boss, the Commissioner, is I need every penny that Desi can give us. They do support us with quite a bit in additional grants, but we need more and I'll continue to make that case.
And one quick follow-up question. Do you think this particular resolution has enough power and punch or does it need to be more specific in order to gain any kind of traction with the state legislature in order for them to get to move on it? Because this, I mean, most of us probably agree with the, the way this is written is probably true, but in order to get them, to get their attention, do we need to put something more tangible in here in terms of quantifying what the needs really are?
My best response to that, as my understanding, is there's a high level of concern at the state legislature, beginning with even the Governor's proposal. There was a significant amount of funding placed in that or suggested for us in that which could be very helpful to us and it seems like that will be the floor on what can happen moving forward, so that's good news. And it looks like the Senate may be positioned, I believe it's the Senate, is positioned to increase that amount. So it does appear that people have recognized that there's been inequity in funding to districts like Southbridge and there's a need to increase that amount. The question, I think, now is to how much? I think that, my understanding is quite a few districts have signed on to this resolution with very similar language and I think it's more about folks being lockstep in agreement than it is about the actual language in the resolution. But I certainly would defer to you folks to make your decision on that.
And if I may, just go further. There's a lot of momentum on Beacon Hill this coming session. Last session, they fell short. The Senate passed some legislation the House refused to take up. We're seeing a lot more pushback and again, the fact that we're seeing not only the teachers' union pushing for this, but we're seeing MAS C join and school committees across the Commonwealth in lockstep with the union, it's monumental and it shows there's a wide base of support. I don't think there's an argument to be made that funding is not an issue within the Commonwealth. And I think us joining with the choir of other voices, making it clear that we need comprehensive reform is important. And because I just, I wanted to be particularly careful with this resolution, there was a segment that was included that talked about mass budget numbers from the last session that I stripped out because I didn't want to give an inaccurate representation of the amount of money we could be getting. I wanted us to be talking about the issue and really pushing the legislature to come up with a solution because if we get the Promise Act, for example, we're looking at a huge boatload of money, a lot more than what the mass budget was projecting. But if we go with the Governor's proposal, we're looking about the same. So I just, I really felt it was important for our district, especially being where we are, to be in the choir of voices pushing for this substantive change.
Okay, just, if I may, just a follow-up comment. I do know that the Chapter 70 formula has not been updated, I believe it's since 2000, or 1994, I think?
Yeah.
Or something like that? And there is a whole boatload of changes that have happened since then. Technology, infrastructure, and Internet IT, all of this kind of stuff that has happened since then and none of that is being accounted for in terms of the rules and regulations, laws, and so forth, in terms of providing special-need services and transportation and all that kind of stuff. It's not even accounted for in the current formula. And so I support anything that is going to get the state legislature to revisit that and try and figure out a way to better equalize public education funding for districts such as Southbridge and many others as well. So, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Page. Are there any other comments? Mr. Bishop?
Thank you. I'm not, I'm not sure what the formula's looking like. That's my biggest concern. We have no assurances that the, a new formula is going to be more advantageous for the students in Southbridge and I'm not convinced that it's a money issue in Southbridge. The Commission of Education, when they took over our district in January of 2016, sat in a auditorium at 25 call 11 and said, "This isn't a money issue." I'm not convinced it is a money issue. It's a management issue. What are we doing with the money? We've spent $30 million for 2,000 students. Okay? I'm not buying, I want to see hard numbers from the state. How much more is going to come to South? Is the Southridge going to support that or is the Town Council going to take that money away from us on the other side of the coin? I mean, you know, this is nice, looks cute. I want to see some hard data, some hard numbers, some real numbers. And again, I'm going to go right back to what I said. This is not a money issue in Southbridge.
Thank you, Mr. Bishop. I will, for the record, state, I disagree. And the needs of the students disagree. We have high-risk populations here in Southbridge that need funding, that in order to provide the services that they need, you need funding. And it's been clear from the, from every school district you look at, not just Southbridge, but every school district, particularly Southbridge in this case, that these groups of students are not getting the funding they need in order to succeed. We need educational equity and the current formula we have does not provide that. This resolution is just a push. The legislature's going to do their job. The Governor's going to do their job. We're not in that position. We're here to push and call for substantive change. The current formula is not working for the community of Southbridge. It has failed them.
And any projected formula has not been shown to us to be more advantageous to Southbridge that I have seen. Perhaps Dr. Valar is more up on the formularization.
The, the budget proposal, the formula proposal from the Governor's office likely would result in nearly $1.4 million more dollars for us. So it's very advantageous and that appears to be the floor. I think the Senate would add to that. And if we don't get it, then last year's problems are going to be a lot more significant this year because remember, we took a zero last year and we cut 31 positions. So yeah, we do need every penny.
Any further discussion? We'll move to a vote. All those in favor of supporting the resolution, please raise their hand. All those opposed? All those abstaining? What the record show, it passed five to zero to one. Mr. Bishop abstaining. We will now move to Agenda Item 5D. The next School Committee meeting is Tuesday, April 9th, 2019, 7:00 PM. We're here in council chambers. And now I will move down to my announcements. First, I want to thank Ms. Duval for her years of service to this committee. I wish her nothing but the best. She has been a valuable asset and she is doing so much better and I am happy to hear that. And I hope that she will continue to be as passionate about education issues here in And going on further, I have done a lot of self-reflection over these last few months. It's been hard. Being involved in education in Southbridge has been hard. Dr. Valar can attest to that. There are times where I have definitely gotten short and have spoken out of turn and that was wrong of me. I have much growing to do. But I think we're all here because we really believe in the opportunity that the Southbridge educational system has. I'm here because I want to make sure every kid in this district, no matter their background, is able to succeed. And there are going to be times where I disagree with the receiver and the receiver disagrees with me, but I look forward to continuing to work with him to do what's best for this community and what's best for the kids. And I will continue to try to do that in the most, what would the word be? The most comprehensive and most beneficial way possible. And I look forward to expanding my relationship with the my relationship with the receiver and this board and working with everybody in this community. And I want to thank Ms. Lapery and other citizens who have come up and expressed their concerns. I understand them wholly. I share many of the same, and I hope to continue to increase the amount of transparency coming from the school department, as well as continue to make this board with the work of the committee members here as transparent as possible. So that's all I have to say. We'll now move on to member forum. I will... I'll start on this side tonight, since I started on the other side. Ms. Shea?
I was one of the people who was lucky enough to go to the PBIS celebration on February 8th. That's the program where... that the receiver has spoken to us about that is helping our students deal with social and emotional issues. I actually found it very, very interesting. I thought we should be doing this. We're asking our children to be open and transparent and supportive of one another, and yet our entire packet of information from the superintendent is one page. The rest of it was the minutes from the last meeting. I think that we should be getting... in the olden days, when I was on this committee before, we used to get a packet of information which was overkill. We got much too much stuff. We need to see and be transparent about information so that we can give it to you, so that we're aware of what's going on. This is... their... their comment was, "Be transparent with parents. Get parents involved." And the parents can't be involved if we don't even know what's going on. This... this very evening, a person just asked for, "How do we get the honor roll in the paper?" This was not a... this probably is a question that you do have to go back to the paper and various things and find out exactly how, but you don't say, "Oh gee, you can come and see me privately." We need to be transparent here and now, and if you don't know, great, that's not a problem. We're being... the word from... from the people in Connecticut was, "Be transparent. Tell us." Say, "Okay, I don't know. That is odd. Everyone should..." I... I see other towns' honor rolls in the paper. Is there a reason we're doing this or not doing this? Let me check and get back to you." That's... that's transparency. We should be transparent among ourselves. We should... our principals should be transparent with their staff. I thought this was a wonderful program for kids. I think it might be a better program for grownups.
Thank you, Ms. Shea. Ms. Palakun?
Hi, I just want to clarify. Somebody had called me with concerns regarding the Head Start program, but I know that's not run by the Southbridge School District, so I just want to clarify for people that they rent the school building from the school district, but it's not a Southbridge School District program. So unfortunately, it's not an area of my expertise, so I feel like I can't really be too helpful in that respect, but I do always like it when people call me, so anytime.
Thank you, Ms. Palakun. Mr. Tama? You all set? Mr. Page? Mr. Bishop?
Thank you. Mrs. Lapery, I want to thank you for supporting the public schools for the last million years we've been together. Had your son at school, terrific young man. I retire before your grandkids go out there. Have to retire sometime, but I do thank you. I thank you for speaking your mind and your honesty and staying with us. We're all hoping it gets better. The honor roll should be published. You know, we sit here every... we talk to the receiver, and we're all about celebrating success. I don't know. Kids on the honor roll and high honor rolls, that's kind of successful, and it should be duly noted. I know when I was the principal, if... if God forbid, we should find a student whose name might have been omitted, I had a parent in my office chewing my backside out, and rightfully so. So I think, yes, student accomplishments and successes should be celebrated and duly noted. I don't know where the breakdown is. As you know, we're so far outside, you know? I feel like I'm in another state, but that's neither here nor there. It's been three years since the state's taken over our system. I think it's due time that the commissioner or the... the people from the... the board come out and explain to us where we are, why we're in the situation we're in. We... you know, Dr. Valar spoke tonight about the amount of money we need for professional development. We've spent a fortune on professional... professional development. The problem is, we've professionally developed people to move into other districts. And Jeff and I... Dr. Valar and I have talked about this. Until we can come up with a solid plan to retain, recruit retained staff, we're just... we're just going to keep rowing this boat in a circle, and we can spend millions and millions and millions. We need to come up with... we need to make our people feel valued, and when I talk to the people who work in the district, that's... that's something that they really, you know? I was the principal here for five years, and if I... if I transitioned two or three staff over the course of a summer, that was a lot. So I don't know where we went wrong, but without retention, there isn't... there isn't a widget factory in the world that's going to be successful, making cars, making widgets, making citizens of the future. We need to retain our staff, and I just don't know how, what we're doing wrong on that regard. But with that, I want to thank you, and have a good night.
Thank you. Any other members wish to say anything? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Is there a second? All those in favor? All those opposed? All those abstaining? Good night.